I can see Mr Adam wanting to answer that one, so I'll just pause and we'll come to that. Titus.
So I'm afraid it's an answer but I can't give a specific figure. Clearly, as the process of disaggregating the fire service from the County Council takes place during the 26-27 financial year, there will need to be a review of the funds that flow to the fire service notionally as part of the local government set up.
Hi guys. I don't know, I hope you can hear me okay. I'm not on mute, so that's good. I could put the headset on, I suppose. My phone. I want to still hear music. It's going to be copyright anyway. Now, this meeting has just started and I'm in the middle of things and I'm running about 10-15 minutes behind the actual live from Norfolk County Council. Because yes, they do stream their live meetings on YouTube. And we're up to this particular point of the devolution because devolution is turning out to be very interesting. And I'm getting annoyed, as usual, because it seems like we're being dictated to and told rather than telling them what services it is we use, how much they cost, the security of the staff and the wellbeing, the safety of our roads and our neighbourhoods, so it's the police, the fire service, the NHS, or schools, or health, which is huge. And then we have this meeting of county councillors. And I can't believe what I'm hearing really, it's like Brexit all over again. But this is our home, it's a bit close to home and this is why it bothers me.
And then the remaining balance that needs to be funded.
Sorry.
The council tax, which will inform the setting of a fire precept for 27-28, but you are right, in essence, that will be a net reduction in the County Council precept and the establishment of a mayoral precept for fire functions.
Thank you, let's hope Norfolk taxpayers notice that then within their bill, or at least it'll be on a different line of the bill. Financials generally within the report, obviously the adult learning and skills budget is due to be vied across and actually down to the proposed local authority.
I like this guy.
Is that a fixed sum or is that intended to increase over time? Because the cost of education continues to increase, you've only got to look at what college lecturers are paid now compared to what they were paid 20 years ago.
You say that about every service, every job.
Skills delivered to improve the lot of the populace, then you need, you know, you need good lecturers, you need good teachers, you need good facilities. And obviously the investment in the facilities is far from cheap.
Because they don't want to educate us.
The adult learning amount continue to be index linked in line with inflation or with any other index, please.
Well, that's a matter for central government. Central government set the amount of money that is awarded and devolved, so it's a matter of government to determine how much they set aside nationally as part of the overall budget.
No, if you want to work, we're telling you more for how this is going to work.
How much the department allocates and then is devolved, that's the nature of devolved funding, it comes from the centre and is devolved down. What I would say in answer to your question.
Hey, that's more praise.
Devolving the adult skills budget gives us the flexibility to decide how it's spent, we do not have that at the moment. The aim is then to add other funding streams to create a single pot which gives us greater flexibility within that. But ultimately, it's a matter of central government to determine how much in the same way as highways.
This guy.
In the same way as other budgets and so on. So clearly, we would like to see it index linked and increased, but that's a matter for another place to determine.
I can't read that. I don't like this bloody.
Still move with much confidence unfortunately, because the answer wasn't good. The answer was good, the answer is what I expected to hear, but it's the government is the problem in all of that. Central government has a way of offering monies to local authorities and then at a whim and a stroke of a pen takes them away.
Yep.
Rural Service Delivery Grant springs to mind, you know, let's have it for a period of years and then decide that you don't need extra funding to deliver on a broad geographical basis. We'll just wipe that out and come up with another indices to determine the funding.
Absolutely.
Of course, if you've then committed to running courses in terms of adult education, you're then left carrying the can on what might be an ever-decreasing value of money and that won't help improve the learning and drive of Norfolk. So very concerned that we may be putting ourselves in a position where that could be an ongoing and ever-increasing problem. My next question, Chairman, if I may, and that'll be the final one from me, is regarding the scrutiny, not just of the police, because currently the Police and Crime Commissioner has a particular panel, I'd chair it, for scrutiny of how her plan operates and how she operates in Norfolk. Again, not being devolved but moved up to a higher authority, going from one for Norfolk to one for Norfolk and Suffolk. Part of the armoury that the mayor will have will be responsibility for policing. And that scrutiny function then doesn't sit within what we've been told about. In fact, I don't see the mention of scrutiny particularly within the report that's coming to us. Presumably, there will be scrutiny of the mayoral combined authority and that will include scrutinising the performance of the policing function within Norfolk and Suffolk, but doesn't outline it explicitly, so I would like some reassurance that there will be scrutiny. After all, you can't have an executive model without a balancing scrutiny arrangement.
Thank you, councillor Long. So in terms of scrutiny, particularly of the police functions, the Police and Crime Panel will continue. In terms of the general scrutiny arrangements through the County Combined Authority, there's a framework set out by government that includes anything from internal scrutiny committees like the Audit Committee. There are expectations for the mayor to produce an annual report, for example, and therefore there is also the opportunity for public questions through meetings as we would have in our own forums as well. So there is a set out scrutiny governance function. You may remember, under the county deal, we also had a local assurance framework. There will be an equivalent framework for the County Combined Authority and that will outline, for example, its approach to transparency, publication, things like that.
Just to come back, that's helpful to know because I think residents will want the assurance to know that, you know, whoever gets in the new office doesn't just do what the heck they want without scrutiny happening. How will the scrutiny function be, you know, how will it be made up? Where will those doing the scrutiny come from? From in year one, from the County Council or will they come from the, and then subsequently from the unitary councils or councils that come afterwards? Because I think it's important that people with experience of scrutiny will be there to scrutinise what is after all, an overarching, bigger, you know, potentially more powerful body. You know, dragging in buddies of the newly-elected mayor to be on the scrutiny panel just to tick a box doesn't cut it for me.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the monitoring officer to take us on a scrutiny journey through the steps ahead.
My favourite thing, a scrutiny journey. So you're quite right councillor, it's, they're made up out of the constituent councils in the first instance. So clearly, as you say, you've got to have that balancing feature of a scrutiny committee. It is a clear requirement that all MCCAs must have at least one scrutiny committee. And obviously, I think most have started with one scrutiny committee, but as time moves on and as functions get added in, obviously you can see that potentially there may be more required. They can have constituent members sitting on them and the ones that have stood up now do have members of those constituent councils sitting on them. Obviously, they can't be the executive members, just like now, so they're normally a sort of politically balanced type model away from that. But also, some have district members sat on them with interests in scrutiny and some have other individuals as well, so people who sort of have a role in kind of public organisations. But it's for the board itself to determine the scrutiny committee, it's not a matter for the mayor, so the mayor cannot make that decision. Similarly, audits and governance type committees, they have on two, again constituent councils, but then also, you know, independent persons are a bit of a feature on MCCA-type audit committees. And so, again, they must be put there by the board, it's not a single mayoral decision. Thank you.
Move on to councillor Morphy.
Thank you, Chair. I'm delighted that councillor Long got in first because he asked the scrutiny question, which saves me the need to do that. I've got two or three questions, but as a preamble, I mean, this is clearly something Norfolk needs and is the expected improvement on the county deal that was previously on the table. I think we can spend a lot of time on how and why we got here, but better we actually use our time on getting the future right. But let me say, this is not just about the money, it really is about the power, the vision and how we fulfil our potential. And it's been a number of years coming and hopefully we are finally at the point where we've got a deal that's worth actually supporting. I was talking to a senior businessperson yesterday, he said that investors are reluctant to invest in Norfolk because we have a reputation for saying no, we are the no-folk folk. We need to be the yes folk, but that doesn't mean just letting everything rip. The mayor and the MCCAs provides a new authority that provides opportunity to develop a plan and powers to join up the parts, build the jigsaw and work with investors and our communities. Story Norfolk should be telling is strong and is full of potential. So my proposal or my issues today are not with the proposals as such, they are more about process and governance and relate to the report. I'd just like to raise a question of the delegation in the Cabinet report, because it talks about delegation to the leader and the chief executive and the monitoring officer to do a whole raft of stuff around setting up the combined authority. And I'm not quite sure what that amounts to, I'd like more details of it. But what I'd also like to make sure is that we know how we will find out what those decisions are that are being made on a delegated basis. Yes, I absolutely understand there's going to need to be some delegation because there's going to be an awful lot of detail and awful lot of stuff to be done. I would like to know how they're going to be recorded and published and as the monitoring officer, I've alerted her to it, I've been referring back to an article that she referred to me in Labour Lawyer on the 25th of June by Geoff Wild about recording and publication of the decisions made under delegation by officers. And so I'd quite like to know how we are going to record those so that everybody can have a look at them. Shall I continue or do you want me to just take them?
I think that's a big enough question that we have a pause actually and get an answer to that one, Steve.
Thank you very much and, you know, it's always fantastic when members read the articles that I send them, so thank you councillor Morphy. The decision-making will be recorded in the usual ways, so clearly, if there is, so in terms of the setting up of the MCCA and those decisions that need to be made around that, anything that impacts the constituent councils, i.e. any expenditure that they may have to make, even if that is then claimed back from the MCCA, which may or may not be the case depending on the situation, those decisions, if they're key decisions, would have to be made by, through the Cabinet or the Cabinet member and so they again will be recorded. So anything that affects constituent councils, normal decision-making rules apply. In terms of any decision-making around the MCCA and any decisions for it, decisions can't be made for it really until it's in place. And so what...
Trying to come back again? We'll go straight over this time.
What you will see on the first meeting of that MCCA, which is likely to be in March time, is a whole list of things to be decided or agreed by that board, which will be the two constituent councils at that point because there won't have been a mayoral election by that time. So that will all be recorded, all of those decisions made by the board will be recorded in the proper ways. I believe that meeting is in public, but I will confirm.
So we're going to record it, we might not actually do anything about it, but we'll record it. That's what I'm hearing. That's what I'm hearing.
And that is where all those decisions will be ratified by the board, so the board then will take its decisions at that point. Before that point, there is no decision-making to be made by the MCCA as such, since it doesn't exist. It's this funny thing where it doesn't exist one day and then as soon as it vests, it exists the next. Does that assist councillor?
Yes and no. I mean, doubtless you've sent me something else to read. But the recommendation to Cabinet is to take all decisions and all steps necessary to finalise the establishment of the mayoral combined county authority for Norfolk and Suffolk up to and including giving consent to it on behalf of the County Council for the purposes of section, blah, blah, blah. I'd quite like to know if those decisions are being taken. I'm not sure whether or not they count as key decisions, but I think, back to the article, they do rate as material decisions. And I think we need to know how this process is going on and who's making the decisions as we go along so that we can keep track of it. Now, it may be that having raised it, it's an issue that we might want to put on a work programme for a future meeting of this committee, but I think it's very important that we do track those sorts of decisions because I think, as I say, I'm very happy with the idea that there do need to be delegated decisions. I am worried about the breadth of the delegation that we're giving unless we've got the capacity to make sure that we are tracking what is being done on our behalf.
So the decision up to consent, so there's a piece in the law that states that constituent councils must consent to an MCCA being created, because obviously they're going to be a part of it. So each constituent, constituents, sorry, it's Friday, each constituent council must give its consent to the overall being created. So in this instance, what we have been told, I mean, what we'll be putting to the executive is, do you consent to that broadly? But what we've been asked to do by MHCLG is to be ready to be able to give consent from a delegated officer doing so. And they've asked that that be the chief executive officer, which is understandable. So my understanding is that what will occur is that the executive may or may not make the decision, because obviously that's still a decision for them, to give consent in respect of the MCCA and being constituent council thereof, but that is a broad consent and then clearly there may be small changes to statutory instruments in between, but those would only ever be really small technical changes. Anything large scale would have to be brought back to the Cabinet for the chief executive officer to consent. So I think it sounds very broad, just in case there's any bits, you know, anything in that, but I'm very aware that it is the executive consenting, it's their role to do so. And the chief exec can only consent on the basis that the executive has already agreed. So it's actually, it looks wide, but it's actually a fairly narrow agreement. But I do take the point that you'll want to know when the chief executive has consented. And of course, we can inform all members of that. And I'm very happy for us to consider around sort of key material decisions and recording by senior officers of those type of decisions at any date that pleases the committee. Thank you.
Thanks, I'm happy with that. So long as we've got some process for making sure that we've got it recorded and we know what's going on as we go along, I'm not trying to impede the decisions being made because I understand some of what you said and some of what you said was new to me. But certainly, decisions need to be made, I think we just want to keep track of them as much as anything else. Shall I move along? Thank you. Second point, actually, still on page 24, it's the appointments to the CCA. There's no recommendation about the appointment of substitutes and I personally think it's disappointing that the recommendation is for the leader and deputy, as it feels like a missed opportunity to be more inclusive by appointing non-conservative or a councillor who is not part of the administration, who owns, who holds some sort of a senior district position at the very least. If the administration can't see the sense in that, then maybe using the substitute role to ensure that there's more diversity would be a desirable fallback and making some sort of a statement of intent around appointments of associates would help allay some of the fears. I understand we need to have senior members of this council there, but because we are in a transitionary phase, until we get the new mayor and the structure of local government reorganisation in place, and it does look like we're going to have some sort of local government reorganisation, then it does feel that if we just hold it as something that the existing top-tier authority and the existing administration keeps control of as constituent appointees, then it's not sending out the kind of message that perhaps we would want to give.
If I just piggyback on that, I think one of the things that's being said out here is almost, do we need a pre-LGR position on this and a post-LGR position in that, given that LGR is up in the air at the moment, we don't know what it's, actually the shape is going to be, therefore perhaps, where you're coming from councillor Morphy, that perhaps we need to reflect that in a greater diversity of membership at that point.
Exactly that. There will be a post-LGR, whatever it is, because there will be different new councils that we'll be appointing. So it's how do we get from here to the point of LGR and what's the best make-up to try and make sure that we are appearing to be inclusive?
Yes, Chairman. We are going to have an interim position, there's no doubt about that, because firstly, we don't have a mayor in place yet. The current legislation and what the government have said to us is they want two constituent members from Norfolk and from Suffolk County Council, two each. That's what we've been told we've got to provide. With regard to districts, they're not constituent members, so it would be down to the MCCA once it's created to decide whether they want to have representation from district members on that. And of course, after LGR, all bets are off because it's going to be whatever unitary councils are in existence at that point and who the constituent members then will be from those unitary authorities. So it's a bit clunky at the moment, but it is what it is, doing what we're being told we should do. And I think that considering that we do have a conservative administration here at Norfolk County Council and quite a large administration as well, I think it's only right that in the initial...
Hearing the same thing again, what we're told to do. What we're told, what we're told, we are being told. Nobody's listening.
Stages, it should be the leader and deputy leader who are those two constituent members and Suffolk are mirroring that.
Thank you. As I said, I think that's disappointing and a mistake. What about substitutes?
I'm not sure what the law actually says on substitutes, to be perfectly honest.
So there are, sorry, so there is a process for nominating substitutes by name, we haven't gone through that process yet.
Well, in that case, perhaps it was, could be a useful, at least comment if not recommendation from this committee that in considering the appointment of substitutes, and I think Cabinet should be doing it at the meeting when they make the decision, then they might look to consider a more diverse approach to it than just keeping it for the administration because I think we do know that post-LGR, whatever else happens, then we will be in the run-up to it. We've got a diverse set of districts that will be coming together with the County Council in some form or another and it would seem to be appropriate that we do at least reflect the broad sweep of what...
Can't spell substitutes, trying to write in, what are substitutes? What were they then talking about? Substitutes within law?
What's going on in Norfolk. But certainly the substitutes, I think, is the key area.
Just to clarify some terminology, if I may, Chair. The make-up of the MCCA board will be the mayor when they're duly elected, so from May 2026, two constituent members from Norfolk County Council, two constituent members from Suffolk County Council. By definition, districts cannot be constituent members, therefore they cannot be substitutes for those constituent members. The MCCA board will have the opportunity to consider nonconstituent and associate members that as a default do not have voting rights on the board. They could be drawn from district councils or they could be drawn from other bodies. The difference is typically a nonconstituent member represents an organisation, an associate member might be a particular person with a particular skill. So in terms of substitutes for the constituent members, they would be drawn from the respective constituent councils.
Sorry, I wasn't suggesting they couldn't be, they need to be, but we do have a range of options within our existing county council setup. And what would also be helpful is some sort of a statement of intent around the associates and districts. I appreciate it's for the MCCA to decide, but if we know who our Norfolk constituent members are going to be, then actually having a statement of intent from them would be quite helpful and I think it would also be helpful to know whether or not the default of non-voting positions for the associates is going to stay the default or whether the option for making them voting members, which I think would be an eminently sensible thing to do, at least until we get to LGR, would be brought into play.
I suppose on that, again, where you're coming from councillor Morphy, is whether at this stage the Cabinet should form a view on kind of the fine details of how it treats substitutes and to whether it has a view on how it will contribute to discussions at the MCCA on who and how it appoints those associate and non-voting members, is that where you're coming from on that?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, if we are, and it looks like we are, going to have a leader and deputy leader as our nominees on the CCA when it gets set up, whether or not we agree with that, if that's what is going to happen, then I think knowing how they're going to take this forward from our perspective around the substitutes and around the associate members and around the voting rights of the associate members and therefore the involvement of districts and others is something that we are entitled, very keen to know about.
I mean, we've been keen to make sure that our district colleagues have been involved in this process all the way through because we recognise that the way that the legislation is and the way this is set up doesn't sort of, doesn't help them to feel like they're involved and have any decision-making powers because they don't under the current situation. So we have been keen to keep them on board, they sit on the sponsoring board now, we've got representatives from districts in both Norfolk and Suffolk on that sponsoring board. Speaking to the leader of Suffolk, we're also keen to involve them in some of the other processes that we have to go through in setting up the MCCA. We are not going to be excluding those key stakeholders from that. In terms of substitutes, I think when we're setting up the MCCA, it's going to be very key that we have people sitting around the table who understand and are involved in the process. But on the other hand, we don't want to be trying to tie the hands of the mayor because when the mayor gets in in May, they may have a different point of view. So we are just the, if you like, we're holding the baby for the mayor for when they arrive and trying to set things up in the most flexible way and give them the most options so that the MCCA is actually going to be a good functioning organisation as soon as that mayor is in place. So it's a question of how far do you go? And we've looked at examples across the country of how other authorities have been set up and we're trying to take best practice. Some have not done very much and the mayor doesn't even have a desk on day one and some have gone the other extreme and have got hundreds of staff. We're trying to find the way through and I'm sure we won't get everything right, but hopefully by involving our district colleagues and by having these sort of conversations, we can get this MCCA up and running so it can start doing good work as soon as possible. can start doing good work as soon as possible.
Thank you for that answer, with a lot of the things we're discussing today, it almost feels like we're going to have to have another conversation at some point in the future, isn't it, and it's going to be when that is, and I think at the next meeting we'll be considering our forward plan, there is a glaring hole in March at the moment on the forward plan, it seemed that that might be an ample opportunity to record, to return to all of these types of areas and fine details, but anyway, back to you councillor Morphy.
Thank you, I'm not sure the leader answered many of the questions, it sounds to me like involving the districts at this stage in those sorts of things, they're likely to get excluded when we get to the point where the CCA is actually set up, albeit for however long a period, but I think the involvement would be helpful, hopefully we can come back to that at some point, but I've made the points around that. I've got one more point to make, and that's around the funding pots and pipelines, where is the pipeline and when will be advised and what's in it, so that we can discuss those priorities, and what are the funding pots being proposed?
So in terms of the pipelines, so officers across all the districts and indeed county council have been working on potential projects, building on existing pipeline activity, that's been shared with and indeed discussed by leaders in all of the, in all of the authorities. We're obviously in a position where we're developing a pipeline for an authority that may or may not exist, so we can't preempt any decisions to proceed or not-
This guy got a clue, this bloody got a clue. Not a clue, get him off, this is real, see.
In terms of sharing that pipeline, the individual authorities have, you know, we need, we need a position where, where individual authorities feel comfortable with putting, putting their, in a sense, work in progress into the public domain, there's obviously a lot of commercial sensitivities around the information contained in projects that areas are working on, so, so we're working through that, so we can, we can publish, publish a timeline. The second point is that we're obviously, pipelines had been developed in parallel in Norfolk and in Suffolk, so there's work, work underway to bring together with Suffolk colleagues the same, the same process, so that we can have a, we can have a joint pipeline. I don't think the pipeline itself will ever be made, made fully public, because it's, because it's a work in, work in progress, but certainly the projects that are, that are going forward for funding consideration would of course be, be made public. In terms of the, in terms of the fund itself, again, we're working with Suffolk colleagues on, on sort of early planning of, of the fund, working with government officials to ensure that the criteria, the governance are in line with the national framework that governments produced, and indeed in line with the local assurance framework that we will, that we will need to agree with government, and as a moniker officer, as previously said, that will be signed off at the first meeting of the combined authority. So we're working on different funding options as well, again, all of this is in preparation for, for the new body, the combined authority, which will be the decision-making body in all of this, so, so, so the pipeline and projects and so on that will be considered by the combined authority will be, will be made, will be, will be made public when that body comes into existence.
Thank you, Chair, yeah, I think that was the answer that I was expecting, but again, if we're going to inspire people to get behind this and to understand what's going on and the potential and to be ambitious, to have a vision, to work out and think about how we spend a billion pound over thirty years working concert with you colleagues in Suffolk and spend thirty odd million pound to leverage a whole pile of other money and to fulfil our potential, actually saying no, we can't tell you what's going on is not really a great place to start, I think we ought to find some way of making sure that we can tell people at least what we can tell them, and it may be that there will be some commercial sensitivity around some of the projects, doesn't mean there's commercial sensitivity around all of the projects, or that the projects are all entirely commercially sensitive, so there is information that we ought to be able to give people, and I think at the moment that's really not going to cut it with very many people, and it's certainly going to leave me asking questions all of the time, which you're going to get really fed up with trying to bat off. However, I'm, I mean, I'm frankly happy to leave it there, I mean, the devil remains in the details, and the details mustn't be allowed to derail what is finally a devolution that we can use to realise our potential, so no more no-folk, let's show what we can do.
I'm, I'm just going to piggyback on, on councillor Morphy, as I do on, on occasions, I suppose the, the challenge out there is, the delivery of these projects is the major selling point of, of devolution in, in terms of the benefits that it's going to bring to this county, and the challenge is to how to ensure that there is an appropriate level of accountability and scrutiny around that pipeline built into the system at this early stage.
I mean, I have to take issue with being called the no-folk, I don't think that's the truth at all, and you only got to look at success stories like the Norwich Research Park, where we are internationally renowned for the work, good work that goes on there and the many different companies that we've brought together, so Norfolk and Suffolk have always worked towards our economic development, and perhaps some of the issues we have have been more about our infrastructure and, or lack of it, and that's another thing that we can potentially tackle through the new mayoral county combined authority. I understand frustration about the pipeline, there are lots of different inputs coming in from district councils, we can't tell the public what those districts are actually working on unless those districts want to reveal them themselves, so if a district council wants to say, these are the things that we think would be the right thing to put forward to the MCCA, then they are at liberty to do that, but it, we have to have, we have, we have to be careful not to promise things that then a mayor who comes in may not want to support, or the other areas who are bringing forward these, these projects, so we've got to actually put in train the, the, which ones come first, how you prioritise them, and there's going to be some tension there as well, so we're really in the very early stages of putting the pipeline together, some of these things may never come to fruition, some may be really easy wins, some are going to be more long-term, very expensive projects over many years. As soon as we can get some of that information out there to show the public that this is what this new authority can achieve for you, then we will get it out there, because I think you're absolutely right councillor Morphy, we need to be able to sell this to the public, but we are in really, really early stages at the moment, as soon as we can get that information out, we certainly will.
Thank you councillor Proctor.
Yes, thank you, Chair, there's a number of things of thinking about where we go next, and I think this is about what we do next, as opposed to the detail that's in the, the paper, because the paper is actually quite sparse in details, we just don't know too much at the moment, but in terms of committees and so forth, we have talked before that the MCCA, or it's going to be called, will have committees, it'll have a scrutiny committee, it'll have an audit committee, et cetera, so roles to fill, to fill those committees will clearly come from the members of the constituent authorities, so I think we know that already, but equally about the, the point you made, Chair, and about looking at what we do next, we have said before that both devolution and LGR should remain on this committee's work programme for obvious reasons, and I think they should be, and likewise with regard to the constituent bodies or nonconstituent members, I think it's fair that the constituent authorities do take a view at this stage, it's not just the mayor, it will be the constituent authorities too, who will have a view, so to my mind, if we are going to involve other people, whether it's district councils, whether it's businesses, whether it's other public bodies, then we ought to have that view now, because to my mind, that assuages a lot of the, the issues that come up, we don't like what you're doing, you're keeping it to yourself, well, no, if we do this, so to my mind, that, that view ought to be happening now. So there's a couple of things, I just want to make comments on more than the else, there's a reference to constitutional arrangements from page twenty nine onwards, so who actually approves the final constitution, does that come back to the constituent members to approve it, that's one question, yeah, sure, okay.
Thank you, so the constitution, currently drafting a constitution, I mean, sort of putting together the technical bits of it, that will be shown to the constituent councils through the sponsoring board, so they will get to consider it there, but obviously they can't approve it for the organisation, it is one of those things that must be approved on day one of the organisation at that inaugural board meeting, is they must put in place a constitution, thank you.
But there may or may not be questions about that in the future, but we'll have to see. The other big issue, of course, is the, the setup costs, setting up an establishment like this as a brand-new body, but there are, there's some learning we can have, I'm sure, from other combined authorities across the country, it's not the first one, so I'm sure we can learn from those, but I think the two points that need to be borne in mind is, first of all, the resources, the financial resources will have to go in, I know there's the capacity funding, was it a million pound a year between the two counties for four years, that's not going to go very far, when you bear in mind what needs to go in, I think the sooner we get the establishment plan together, the better it's going to be, it's only a few months from now until March to get all these things done. In terms of the spatial development strategy, which is referred to on page thirty-four, there will have to be some sort of linkage, but equally there'll be impact on local plans, I've raised this point before, but I think it's a point that needs to be made, really to, to make sure that we've got that in mind. The other points really are around the, the governance structure, so obviously there'll be big changes in the future, so at the moment, we're looking at this being a sort of transitional period between May 2026 and whenever LGR, if it happens, kicking in, so that this is a transitional period, so there will be some sort of impact, but the thing that's sort of come up, and I think it's been mentioned already, is the communications plan, and the more we communicate to people what's actually happening, so this doesn't become a sort of an anorak job where you're just purely looking at from the council's point of view, this has got to be put out much, much wider, because when you look at those consultation responses, was it 2966 people responded, and all of those either disagreed or strongly disagreed with all the questions, so surely we must get a proper communications plan in place post the sixteenth of October, really to make sure that we tell people, A, what's going on, and B, what the benefits are, it's really around the same sort of things we talked about with LGR, of sell the benefits, if we don't do those sort of things, the scepticism comes back into place to say, oh, you're just keeping it to yourselves, you're not telling us, somebody somewhere has got to own the comms plan, it's not for the mayor, it's for us, and we need to own that comms plan prior to the elections in May 2026, I think that's all I can really cover at this stage on my list, Chair.
Thank you, Chair, if I pick up a few of those, do come back to me if there's anything I miss, councillor Proctor, I, I think in terms of the establishment, you're right, we're learning from other organisations, the leader referenced that, that balance between two smaller resources to make the most of the opportunity, two larger organisations that feels a kind of bureaucratic cumbersome organisation proportionate to its stage in development, so we are looking at that, and our priority is to establish an organisation that can function effectively and make the most of the opportunities for Norfolk and Suffolk as quickly as possible, we've done that through speaking with, meeting with, comparing ourselves to other established MCCA areas, there are some posts that are mandatory, so there are some things that are given, so we know there are statutory posts with any statutory organisation, and beyond that, we are working through over the next couple of months, the plans and outline budgets for that first year or so, so that's a work in progress at this stage. Funding sources, as you pointed out councillor Proctor, is the capacity funding, the first year of which comes to the council's future capacity funding will obviously go to the MCCA, the monitoring officer alluded to the potential to recover council costs back from that future organisation, and it's standard practice that the sources of income for MCCAs would be capacity funding, top slicing of project income, in essence, we've talked about that before under the county deal, the same principle would be the same investment fund, adult skills, other grant income, and then the potential for precepting as well, so that's where the MCCAs income sources come from. Unitary changes will obviously, you know, work that through nearer the time when we know the government decision on the number of unitary councils across Norfolk and Suffolk, and the voting rights would therefore change at that point, they would become the constituent members of the council, sitting on the board with the mayor, but apart from the numbers, the process and operating of the MCCA will be the same, and in terms of comms plan, that is exactly the anticipation as the councils make their decision, which if you also remember, we anticipated being a little bit earlier than this, we, we intend to push that, two things, one is helping the public understand what it is, so they engage in anticipation of the election, but also that they want to get involved and understand it in anticipation of the election, so information but also inspiration will be the plan.
I would suggest we be a bit careful about what we say about precepting, because I think that'd be the sort of thing that turns people off straight away, extra money, extra council tax, so let's be very, very careful about that, and plus of that, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying about the top slicing, because that's where some of the money has to come from, but thirty-seven million pounds, I think it's split, what, fifty-fifty revenue capital is it, so it's not going to go that far when all the projects are taken into consideration, where borrowing requirements are as well, so we do need to be very, very careful about what the costs of the establishment are, primarily for that reason.
I don't disagree councillor Proctor, as I say, they're the potential sources of income for the combined authority, and it will be for the board of the combined authority to set its budget, government also has regard for the spread of council tax across areas when setting, for example, limits for, for raising council tax, but ultimately the budget setting will be for the board of the MCCA, and I'm sure they would have in mind the issues that you've identified.
Oh, they will, I'm sure they will, but let's also bear in mind in terms of council tax, we're already in a situation where government are effectively mandating a five percent increase per annum for authorities across the country to accord with total spending power, so it's just that overall issue that will, you know, go against the, the benefit, shall we say, of setting up something like this, which is value, big value to the future economy.
I'll go over to you, Chris, I was seeing that as more of a hypothetical point rather than a question, but Chris, if you want to answer that.
So I'm going to answer your middle question, which was spatial development strategy, so just to, just to pick up on that point, rather than going into precepting, so spatial development strategy absolutely needs to align with the work of local plan, we are still waiting for, waiting for the guidance from government, but in terms of the preparation towards the spatial development strategy, which in a sense is a slightly higher level of, of plan, which will help attract investment but also guide development, needs absolutely to sit in with, with local plans, of course, government is asking everyone to redo their local plans if they haven't got one and so on, as, as for example in Greater Norwich, no sooner is the plan agreed, but we're going to start again on that, but, but absolutely, so there is a, there is a, an officer team working absolutely knitted with the districts to ensure that, ensure there's absolute join-up on that.
Thank you, I'm briefly slipping one of my other hats on, as the planning portfolio holder of board and district council, entirely endorsing that position, in that the last thing we want to happen is for a new mayor to come in and there be a blank piece of paper in front of them in, in terms of their, their future spatial development strategy, I think all of the councils are working together to make sure that there is something in front of, in front of him where, when, when they come into post, Leedy, you wanted to come in?
I mean, yeah, yes, the setup costs, you're absolutely right, setting up a new authority is not going to be a cheap thing to do, but with our colleagues in Suffolk, we've been looking at the services that we have already within our own councils and how we can best share the burden, but there is the chance to recharge the MCCA for any costs to this council, because it wouldn't be right for us to bear those, those costs long-term, I don't think there's going to be enough money in that, in that initial, in that initial fund, the four million pounds over four years, perhaps, certainly not in the first year, but there certainly would be in future years, so we're looking at things like HR functions, legal functions, which council will be best to help out in the setting up of the MCCA initially, so that we actually keep the cost as low as possible, and also the sharing of offices, so we've got this, we've got this building here, we've got another building in Ipswich, we're not looking at sort of gold-plating this MCCA and spending a vast amount of money, because we're very conscious it's taxpayers' money ultimately. On communications, you're absolutely right, the general public don't necessarily understand what it is that this, this means for them, perhaps once we can get some of those pipeline projects out there, we could say that this is as a result of having this mayoral combined authority, and it's a good thing, because we don't get that economic development money now, and the pot of funding we have is never going to be big enough, but there is the, the prospect of future pots of money, other areas that have had mayors have seen- Other areas that have had, mayors have seen more funding come through, and we can use it as seed funding to bring other money in. We expect to double or triple that pot. It's not just that amount we've got to rely on. With precepting, some mayors do and some don't. Some mayors will precept for a specific project, and if your general population can see that by raising a preset for a specific task, some people would like to do that, some people won't. It's not for us to decide, it's going to be for the MCCA. I think we've just got to look at best practice across the country. We've seen some MCCAs do extremely well, and they're held up as exemplars, and we'd like some of that. And others have not necessarily done quite so well or have had false starts. I think Cambridgeshire and Peterborough had a bit of a false start, but are now starting to get back on track. So it is what we make of it, and it's up to us to shape it, and this is the point at which we start to do that. And so all of this, this input is really, really good, good stuff for us, because we need to take it all on board. And I'd be really welcome that this select committee continues to look at this as we move forward, so that we can shape this for Norfolk and Suffolk. I think that's important.
Yeah, I think that really adds weight to what I said about the comms plan. Now, if there's anything else that comes from this in the next few days, bearing in mind that everybody knows it's being discussed, then we ought to start saying, this is the thing that's going to happen for the future, here are the benefits, this is what will happen across the two counties as a result of this big and good investment.
Thank you. I think there's a natural public cynicism, isn't there, about any new layer of government that is going to cost them more money? And in some respects, that's well founded, and that's for the politicians to fight out when they have their mayoral elections, to convince the public that it maybe won't. I think one of the tests of the comms plan as it comes forward will be how many people turn out next May to elect this new mayor. And the last place we want to be is the sort of turnout we had for the initial police and crime commissioner elections, which were really absolutely on the floor, weren't they? I'd cite that as a rhetorical point. I've got councillor Long, then councillor Bambridge.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. The last of my points that I didn't go down the route of, I was expecting Steve to come in on, because previously he'd had quite a lot to say about the sort of quantum of what these deals were like. And obviously, page 37, 5.1 introduces in the report the 37.4 million per annum over 30 years. Obviously, that's split between Norfolk and Suffolk and split between revenue and capital. And I think it mentions it again in the financial implications on page 41 as well. Now, obviously, that's for Norfolk and Suffolk. I didn't know whether we'd done any sort of comparative look at what had been offered previously to establish whether or not this was the better deal that Steve made reference to in 2023, that now Lord Bellingham made reference to in 2016. In fact, that was going to come along in short term, according to, as was Sir Henry at the time. And I recall, and this is just off the top of my head trying to recall these things, that the 2023 deal, we were talking about 20 million per year just for Norfolk. But obviously, between now and then, we had, you know, one year there, inflation hit nearly 10%, didn't it? And then obviously, back in 2016, that was, I think Norfolk, Suffolk, Cambridge originally, and then went down to just Norfolk and Suffolk. But again, 20 million springs to mind, and £100 million for investment in housing in Norfolk and Suffolk, centred on Norwich and obviously King's End, Great Yarmouth. And I just wondered if any number crunching had been done to see whether this deal was really as good. Because in my mind, you know, that £100 million upfront for housing, it's better to have £100 million in the bank and do something with it than wait, you know, for the next three, four, five, six years' worth of the capital share out of 37.4 to start to deliver on some of those things. So is the deal as good? And, I mean, the question that was always being put before was, oh, but is there a better deal to be done? Doesn't sound like there is a better deal to be done. It always, it sounds more like extra flannel from government, if you ask me. But have we actually number crunched it? Do we know that it's financially as, you know, better than what we've had previously?
I'm going to invite the leader to give a view, but I'm not going to invite any debate over the topic. Leader.
Yes, well, it depends on how you view it, as to whether you think it's a better deal or not. The total pot between Norfolk and Suffolk is slightly bigger per annum. It's £1.4 million per annum bigger. However, we are 12 months later. We also had some other projects that we were expecting to be funded under the county deal, which have fallen away, so that's money we've lost. And you're right, inflation, there is inflation. This is never going to be an inflation-linked pot of money, it is what it is every year, so it's a diminishing return, if you like. I think we did try and do some number crunching. It's quite difficult, because the information to actually get out exactly how much per head it is better than last time, and I think it works out around about 20p per person per year. So if you can think of something you want to spend your 20p on, you can use the toilets at the Lord and Stave for 20p, but you'll only be able to go once a year. So if you think that's an improvement, well, that's an improvement, that's one way of looking at it. Another way of looking at it is, if we'd had the deals that we've been offered previously, we'd be in a much better place than we are now. What we have to decide going forward is, is this a good enough deal to take it? And what is the alternative? And I suspect the alternative is nothing at all. So on that basis, should we go forward or shouldn't we? And that's the decision that the executive will make on the 16th.
Thank you, Leader. I think it's kind of outside the remit of this committee to debate the relative merits of historic deals or not. And as the leader has said, the question which we're advising Cabinet on is about the decision about this deal which is on the table at the moment. Councillor Long, you wish to come out?
All I wish to say, Chair, as well, I read this agenda listening to another Brian, Brian Ferry. The album was Another Time, Another Place. Actually, probably Another Time and Another Place, we should have had that deal in 2016.
We'll not take that any further. I've got councillor Bambridge, and we'll go councillor Morphy.
Thank you, Chairman. The White Paper states that there's decline in the trust of local politics, and you've alluded to that in a way, Chairman, and I'm not sure that this will ever improve that. Fingers crossed it does. But the document also says about fairness in funding. And when I talk to local people, my residents, they say, oh, well, all this extra money will go to Norwich. And the document says that policy can be tailored to local decisions, and devolution gives communities a say in decisions that affect them. How can I reassure the residents that I speak to that this will happen and that there will be a fairness in funding across the county? Thank you.
It will be down to the constituent members to have that fight, I suspect, over where the money goes. That's why we've tried to involve our district councils as much as possible to come forward with a pipeline of projects. We're not going to stick all the money in one place, I think that would be wrong. And as we've got two members from Norfolk, two members from Suffolk, and the mayor, that's a conversation to be had. But this mayor is for Norfolk and Suffolk, and the money has got to be shared out. So I hear what you're saying, and there is always a risk, but I don't see that mayors in other areas have put all their money into one place, they have tried to share it. And also, this is a strategic role. So we're looking at strategic transport, strategic housing, we're looking at doing that over a much wider footprint, and we will be scrutinised by government. So if we are found to have done the right thing after 18 months, there's the possibility of more power and more funding, and that's probably an even bigger prize. So that should help focus the minds of those constituent members to make sure that the funding is fair and that all areas benefit, and that both counties get something out of this. And it's for the economic development of our region, not just for urban areas.
Yeah. Before I answer councillor Bambridge, I wanted to come back, because I feel I disappointed councillor Morphy with my earlier answer on the pipeline. Part of the reason the pipeline's not being made public at this stage is, in a sense, to respond to councillor Bambridge's point, we need to ensure that what we're putting forward has a solid basis in evidence and is not just based on who shouts loudest for projects they want and so on. So to ensure that it is properly distributed or to projects. That means the pipeline takes time to build. Therefore, you publish it at any point, it's an incomplete list, because we're still working with teams across our districts and indeed working with the voluntary sector, with the private sector, with the education sector, to build that and so on. But to give a taste of the sorts of things, coming to councillor Proctor's comment about what are the sorts of things, we're looking at skills projects that could improve life chances of people in some of our most deprived areas. We're thinking about infrastructure projects to connect our communities. We're thinking of business support projects to help our businesses and young people start up in business. So those are the sorts of things that are coming through the pipeline. The precise projects will come out in time. In terms of the, how do we ensure local representation, I think it's really important to think about the, well firstly, the mayor is elected by everyone, so they will be very visible in terms of, they will stand and fail on what they do. I think the second piece is also that the mayoral county combined authority will work with local authorities in partnership with local authorities in local areas. The purpose of a combined authority is precisely that, that it brings together our local authorities, our districts, as is now, and indeed working with more community-level projects. So it's very much, or should be seen as a partnership, that this sort of big organisation or small organisation convenes, brings partners together, and then works in local areas. So I think it's a two-way piece of how do our local members and so on work with the combined authority to ensure that that authority represents and is able to work in tune with what they want to do in their particular community.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that it is because of voting, people are now being made aware of a mayoral election next year, and this is why the questions are being raised. But thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to councillor Morphy.
Thank you. And just almost building on some of those things, I mean, I think it's really important that we remember that everybody in Norfolk and Suffolk is going to get a vote. So they're going to be able to vote for whoever they want and whatever manifesto they come up with. And I think inevitably, those manifestos are going to be discussing some of the things that will be around the pipeline and investment and what the priorities are. And actually, I think from our point of view now, in terms of informing and generating some sort of debate amongst the wider population, introducing some of those things to give people a chance to chew them over and have some thought about them, I think we're going to need to trust people in Norfolk and Suffolk to get their heads around some of this, because it's going to be really significant. And there will be choices to be made, and there will be timetables to be pursued, and we won't be able to do it all at once, and we will have to stage things, and some things won't go ahead for whatever reason. So I think this is a different horizon, a different platform, a different spatial view of politics and the way we get things done, which we're going to need to introduce people into and give them a chance to get used to debating within this political space. And I think the sooner we start on that, the better, given the constraints that we've got. And I've just snipey bits over the corner here from councillor Long. He's not going to get away with that. I mean, one of the key points was that actually whilst there was this promise, the £20 million, when it turned out there was no money in the government budget to actually fund it. So this is actually funded money, for one, and it's in the budget. And secondly, it's not just about the money, it is about the powers, it is about the vision, it is about giving us a seat at the top table. And actually, that's probably worth more in the long term. But if you have a look at the report and the money which is going to be made available for things like housing through Homes England, and they're talking about making sure that we get the relationships built so that we get our fair share, the key bit is about building the relationships and getting this new authority to build relationships within government investors, international investors, business investors, all sorts of people. And it's about that relationship building, which we can start laying the grounds to enable whoever finishes up the mayor of being able to make progress quickly. We are going to be in competition with other mayoral authorities and other areas, we always are going to be for funding. So the sooner we get our stall out there and we start campaigning on it collectively as well as politically for our own individual priorities, then the better and the better job we'll do for Norfolk.
Leader.
I mean, we don't even know who some of the candidates are yet, do we? And we can't put words in their mouths. This is a wish list from the districts and from the county about the sort of projects we think a good mayor of Norfolk and Suffolk might want to get their teeth into. It's an offer. And I'm sure that working with the mayor, once they're elected, they will see that they can have some easy wins, and they'll also be taking the people in those areas along with them, because these are the things that those people have come forward with. But we've got to be careful not to preempt what the manifestos are going to be for those candidates. There is going, and the government have mandated that there will be a booklet that comes out that will go to every household, and each mayoral candidate will be able to set their stall out in that alongside their normal sort of canvassing. So there's an opportunity for you to be able to compare all the candidates in one place when that happens. But we're some way off that yet, and I'm really, really pleased that what was a Conservative initiative to have mayors and to have this sort of setup has now been adopted by the Labour government, and that they're not going to forget Norfolk and Suffolk, because they have put us on the devolution priority programme. And whether we think that this deal is better or not, we've got the opportunity to grab it or to not grab it, that's down to us.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from committee members? I don't see any, in which case I'll do some summing up as to where we are then. So we're being asked to do pre-scrutiny today, or the proposal to consent to the establishment of a Norfolk and Suffolk combined authority and provide feedback on the content and any recommendations to Cabinet. I think from the tone of committee today, as far as the decision which Cabinet is making, we've kind of moved beyond that, I think, haven't we? In that many of the questions are kind of assuming that Cabinet will make the decision. I don't actually hear any particular opposition or anybody coming up that there are any game stoppers in the questions that they're raising to Cabinet making its decision next Thursday. But in terms of what we have been looking at today, there have been questions about the financials and the index linking of those.
I need to go, need to crack on. If you want to carry on watching this, or watch the edited version, it's over on the Norfolk County Council YouTube. That's for me. I think I need a walk. Right, catch later. Boy, oh boy.